Probably the most needy schools in our district to be significantly upgraded. That, those three schools and then including Sea Building at the high school campus, we've identified as our most needy buildings. We also know that from when we attempted to do a much bigger project a few years ago, we gained a lot of information from that process. Some of it great, some of it not so good. We also did a very extensive survey of community members after that failure of that bond proposal to find out from the public what was good about, what was bad about it, what did we do right in the process, what did we do wrong in the process, and what could we do differently going forward? And I didn't touch on this as much last time, but I think it's important. That survey was a statistically valid and more in-depth survey than what we're currently conducting. Now, I think the data that we're getting right now is particularly valuable because it's data from today. But that survey went much more in-depth in terms of looking at four different quadrants of our community and comparing the data between those different quadrants to see what different parts of town, different neighborhoods felt about school buildings and school building projects. And so, we were able to take a look at that data and really compare the results. That was particularly interesting. Now, there were, and so what we did try to find from that survey were common themes, and that's kind of helped us to get to this point today, to focus on the common themes that the whole community agreed upon, and then try to, try not to work so much on the areas that we don't have agreement on, so that we, we really try to find the things that the community just denied on to go forward. We also know that there were significant roadblocks to the last proposal. One was that, that we heard was there were too many projects at one time, that it was overall too expensive. The tax increase was too much of a tax increase. They felt that it was going to be a difficult project to manage, that building new elementary schools where existing elementary schools were not ideal and distracting to the current elementary school environment, that being here. But we also found that the public would support bond issue of about five dollars per month on a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home, and that would pass by a margin of about sixty-six percent. Now, this survey's got, got a margin of error, but we were trying to find the most common factors. So, what we did was that we waited a while. We all have gotten a lot of comments from the members of our community, each of us individually as board members, and I can tell you personally, I've continued to get comments of, "Look, when do we even go back and try to address the needs that we know we have?" And we all have approached this from the standpoint of, "Look, we recognize that we need to address our most pressing needs, but we also have to recognize that we have to do things that the city will support." And most importantly though, we've got to make sure that we, we throw out ideas and get feedback from the public. And I, and I think we're doing that. We've got wonderful feedback and wonderful attendance from our town hall meeting that we had at the high school, and then consequently, I think we've got a great crowd here, and we'll have good feedback here. And then the online survey, we've gotten tons of commentary that Tom and others have been combing through, and us as board members, to go through to find commonalities and common themes. One thing we know, that this particular building was built in 1954, so sixty-two years ago. And Matthews was built in 1955, and those are our two oldest buildings in our district. And it's interesting, I was talking to Tom this week about it. It's, it's not that they're the two oldest buildings, because they're, but there are vast differences in ages of school construction and our school buildings. For example, if you look at what was the junior high when I was in high school, which is now the fifth and sixth grade center, that was built in the seventies. That particular building is still a very, very good building for the purpose that it is addressing. It is, it, and, and while that still though is fifty years, or forty years old, forty-some-odd years old, that's, that's a, that's a long time for a particular building, but that building's in great shape. One would think that the building, the current junior high is a relatively new building, that was, the building was built in the eighties. Now, me having gone to high school in the eighties, I know how I feel, but I think that building's holding up better. So, the, the point is, is that buildings that were in the mid-fifties definitely show their age and also have construction flaws, like all the exterior entrances, that are detrimental to the, to the current standard of learning that we have. The other, the other big need that we noticed is Sea Building on the high school campus. Sea Building continues to be the one building that if you were on our high school campus, you would find that, that seems to be the most needy building or the most stressed building on campus. There are many problems with it, not the least of which are HVAC and ventilation, noise because of how the HVAC and ventilation has to work, moisture, and what we believe is that our high school campus can and is a very attractive, high-quality campus with one building that, that has significant needs. So, what we've done is we've tried to come up with a framework of some ideas about how we can start to go forward with a phased-in approach to address the needs that we have in our school district. And we came up with, and you had a straw man proposal in front of you, but we came up with this phased-in approach that would address those needs. Now, what I want to really emphasize tonight, and I think this got somewhat confusing at the meeting that we had on the high school campus, is that what we're really talking about here though is phase one. We're not, we're, we want input for the phased-in approach, but what we're really throwing out for consideration is phase one. And phase one is an approach that we can take, that we can use our own capital reserves plus reborrowing debt that we currently already can support in our current debt service levy. And we could do all of that and build a, a new elementary school with no tax increase. And when we heard all of the commentary that we've heard up to this point, that seems to be the most desirable idea. Now, again, we want everybody's comments, but it, there were a lot of questions surrounding, what does this mean for, are we really, for taxes, and does this mean that we're really going to vote on eventually phase one and phase two at one time? And I just want to clear that up, that really we're talking about the zero tax increase phase one to get the project started. So, that's a little bit about the straw man proposal. It would include a new elementary school on the ground that is in vegetation acres. We are very, very fortunate that Scott Matthews donated land to the school district some time ago for the purpose of this, so we've got zero cost in land, which, talking to other members of other school boards, that's a huge advantage that we have, that we don't have to use tax dollars to, to acquire land to, to first start to build a building on. That, we are working on ideas about how big that building would really need to be and what it would, what it would exactly cost, but you can see here that we estimated it to be eleven million dollars. We really hope that could be a lower number, but we feel certain about that. We also have the opportunity and have submitted an application for a safe space that would also be included in that, in that building. That would enable us to spend even less, so our, our eleven million is kind of a worst-case number. If we were able to get the safe space grant that would be awarded through FEMA, through the state emergency management agency, that would, that would reduce the burden that we would, as a district and taxpayers, would have to spend on that particular building. It's going to be a while before we know that information, but we at least know, we, our project has been selected as one of the projects to be considered. So, that's good news. So, anyway, you can see here that we currently have a twenty-one cent debt service levy. That would enable us to borrow a new issue bonds for a new eight million dollars debt we've got, as you can see here, district reserves. I would also mention that we've done a little research here to look at other surrounding school districts, total tax levies and total debt service levies. This list that we're looking at includes nineteen school districts, so they range from very small school districts for this though, being probably the smallest school district gone here, to including the four bigger school districts in our area, that being Bluff, Jackson, and K. We currently get our twenty-one cent debt service levy, or number six out of those nineteen school districts, so we're very low on that list now comparatively speaking. We're in the lower part of the middle of the pack on total tax service, or total tax levy. So, we fall actually in the bottom tiers when you look at that in comparable, or particularly in comparable school districts, but also even compared to smaller school districts. So, I thought that information was, was pretty informative. So, I'm going to turn it back over to Tom, who's going to cover some of the tax information.
Thank you, Jim. On your sheets, you should have on the back of that first sheet tax, school tax information. And I'm just briefly going to go through this information simply because it is applied not to the first phase, but the second phase. And in addition, this is information that's involving this school year. If we go out to two thousand, nineteen, two thousand and twenty, obviously, things are going to be slightly different. You can see first off, that as far as real property, your real estate, it is assessed at nineteen percent, okay? You could take the market value of a home at fifty thousand dollars, you can take nineteen percent of that, and you'll come up with nine thousand five hundred dollars. That is the amount that's going to be a tax. From there, and by the way, I'm not a math teacher, okay? So, you may need to go ahead and refer to some of the math people out there for clarification. You take that ninety-five hundred times the three eighty-six, which is the total school tax, and you divide that by a hundred, and you see what you will be paying for that school year in taxes. Am I correct, Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Jim.
In order to find out then, how much an increase is going to be with the nineteen cents as an example, which was also proposed, add that nineteen cents using the same type of formula, and you can come up what an increase is going to be. So, this particular case, with a fifty thousand dollar home, and you add nineteen cents to that, it's going to raise it up to eighteen dollars and five cents per year, okay? With that, you can take it all the way across, and you figure it out all the way from a hundred and five, a hundred and sixty, to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home. And you can figure out how much taxes you're currently paying, and also how much taxes will be by adding in. You could add in ten cents, if you add nineteen cents, or whatever you'd like to. In addition to that, you are also taxed, not only on real estate, but also your personal property, that is assessed at thirty-three and a third percent, okay? The same type of manner in which you figured out the real estate is how you would figure out your personal property. Now, not necessarily that you would have all of those toys listed down there, but those are some items that you can refer to and give you an indication as far as how to figure out your personal property tax. Are there questions on that? We will most certainly go back through this at a later time to try and clarify, but I just wanted to briefly go through it at this time. Okay, along with that, I mentioned earlier that a school survey was put out immediately following our October eleventh meeting, and we've been running it close to three weeks now. We've had six hundred and sixty-seven people that have responded to the survey, which is outstanding. Outstanding number of people have come around and filled us out, a hundred comments that we have looked at, we've tried to address, and will be addressing. Just let me give you a, a brief synopsis, I guess, of the survey. The questions that were on there, for one, was do you agree that the school, the building needs, there are building needs within our school district? Ninety-four percent of our folks said yes, five point four percent said no. Would you support the potential bond proposal for a no-tax increase, which would generate eight million from the current twenty-one cent debt service levy? Eighty-eight point six five percent said yes, eleven point three five percent said no. Now, as you start to move into the next question, which is, would you support the potential bond proposal for a ten-cent increase plus a twenty-one cent levy which would generate thirteen billion? Seventy point two oh percent said yes, twenty-nine point eight oh percent said no. The last question was involving a nineteen cent levy, fifty-seven point one two percent said yes, and forty-two point eight eight percent said no. Now, along with that, we had several comments that were there, and there was a lot of trends, a lot of threads as far as what the people were asking. One was that it affected a large elementary, one type of mega elementary building. Also was mentioned that at the first and second grade center and the third and fourth grade center, which was a proposal back in the two thousand and fourteen bond issue. Many were also talking about no-tax increase. Several of you, and some of you are probably in attendance tonight, were talking about moving Matthews to the new building as opposed to Lee Hunter teachers, because I, from that moment on, from that meeting on, it's been quite a discussion. A lot of people have also commented that need something done with our elementary buildings, along with that of Sea Building. So, that's what a vast majority of our folks comment on. A lot of them are positive, a lot of them were positive, were not positive, were negative, but it gave everyone the opportunity to comment on how they felt about the proposal. I do want to mention again that the survey is going to be open through November eighteenth, which is on a Friday. In addition, if you have not filled out the survey, we do have computers back there tonight, so if you'd like to go ahead and look through those and go through that tonight, you may do so before you go home. In addition to that, once we're finished here this evening, if you want to go ahead and look around, feel free to look around. I have Ms. Pinker back there, I'm sure she would be happy to, and I have several teachers here, I have Ms. Martin here, two, I believe, they'd be more than happy to show you around this building if you would like to go ahead and look around. Now, with that being said, we're going to open up the comments. It's your time to shine, it's your time to speak, it's your time for, to give us feedback, input as far as the, of the proposal. I have the mic and I'm ready. Who would like to comment tonight? Now, last time, I had to move all around the classroom, or all around the gym, or all over the cafeteria, north of the street.
Tom, I've got a question.
Go ahead, Jim, that I know came up quite a bit.
Why can't we fund school projects with a sales tax or some other type of tax other than property taxes?
Simply because this, and this is on your FAQ, when you look at that, is that we do not have the legal authority to utilize a sales tax or a tobacco tax in order to fund a school building, okay? We have to utilize a general obligation bond. That's in accordance with state statutes, and that's what we have to follow. Next question, Jim? I've got several teachers out there tonight, I would really like to hear what you think about the first phase of the proposal, really would. And I've got the mic for you. I have it either. Ms. Gladwell would be happy to comment.
Hi. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jody Gladwell, and I'm the academic principal at the junior high. I have an interesting perspective on all of this. I'm not from here, I'm a transplant to southeast Missouri and to Sykesville. However, I am a bulldog, and I've now been here for fifteen years. When I was looking for a teaching position, all the applications looked the same after a while. This one was worded differently, and it stuck out, and I filled it out, and they said, "Come for an interview." I said, "Okay." My dad lived an hour away, I said, "I'll go see him, and that'll be it." I was blown away from the minute I walked in the door at the board office, for passion that people have for educating children in this town. Took the job the next day. Then I walked in August first to A building, and said, "I've got my letter from Mr. Williams, I can get my key to my room." Linda Mainly says, "Okay," and she takes me on a tour to Sea Building. It didn't match the image I had in my head from that interview. The wall didn't meet the floor, my room flooded, it was cold when it was hot outside, or rather, vice versa, we had no temperature control. If my room was burning up, the woman who had the control was freezing. The paint was peeling, and anytime we did group work, I had to say to my kids, "Now, guys, remember, we have to watch the volume because the wall doesn't meet the floor." It was not conducive to learning. I can tell you, it hasn't gotten any better, and our kids deserve so much better, and so do our teachers, because that building has seen better days. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Anyone else? Oh, please. Teachers? What is your take on the move we brought up last time? What are your thought process about that? As far as whether we move Matthews or whether we move Lee Hunter? What are your thoughts? Anyone else have anything else to comment on? Pamela?
Hold on a second, I need a mic. You got that mic? You'll be all the way?
Well, mine isn't, oh, mine isn't about to move. Mine is concerning phase three and phase two. I would personally like to see, I'm fine with, we'll voting down Matthews, but as far as constructing athletic fields at that location, I would like to see the multipurpose building that the kindergarten center done for that, because I feel like we are in desperate, desperate need, and we have a lot of parents that come for our programs, and we just are not able to accommodate them, and I think that is much more important than athletic fields. I have nothing against athletics, but I think the multipurpose building and the constructing the athletic fields need to spot places.
Very good point. And as you remember from last meeting that we had, is that we put in NOIs, notice of interest, back last, no, excuse me, two years ago, and that included Matthews, Lee Hunter, Sea Building, Southeast, and also the kindergarten center. That is for a safe room, so we're hoping that we'll get that opportunity, but that point well taken with that, that's a very good point. Anyone else?
I have a question, I'd like to address the teachers, not so much the administrators at Lee Hunter. One of the big concerns that Morehouse residents had, and I know people that are attending Lee Hunter now have safety concerns, I would like to know how you all feel about teaching at this location, and if you feel safe or not.
I've been with the Sox and District for nine and a half years, and I love teaching here, but my safety concerns are there's, there are too many doors, cases, where people can come in and out of, and the way our classrooms connect is a safety concern with, if you happen to have an intruder, if they get down, perhaps in my room, I'm at the end of this hall, and then there's two other classrooms that connect to my classroom. So, if they get in my classroom, the other two classrooms are easy targets. And it's the same with all of our wings. And, you know, my first concern is going to be keeping my students safe. And hiding out in the bathroom is not the best thing, because that's where the doors all connect, is that little hallway between our classrooms. And, you know, Ms. Gladwell talked about heat control. You know, in the wintertime, we may burn up, in the summertime, we may burn up. We do burn up, it gets like eighty-five to eighty-eight degrees in our classrooms now, and that's not conducive to teaching. But I do love this school, I love the people I work with, but in my opinion, this school is in dire need of either a lot of repair, updating, or a miss school. Here you go.
Thank you. Anyone else? And the mazes, like we're talking about here at Lee Hunter, is similar to that of Matthews as well, we can just go down from one classroom right into the next.
I, I too, like, and Ms. Gladwell, not from here. I came here basically because of my wife, which is a teacher at the fifth and sixth grade center. I can tell you, since this school's been built, there's been three point three million kids come through this school. And that's not counting Matthews on top of that. If you look around, you can see, just looking at the ceiling, I mean, that's not very good. I have a six-year-old son who's in the first grade, and the fourth day that he was here, at the dinner table, he said, "I don't want to go back to Lee Hunter because it's a dump." And he came from the kindergarten center. Up until last week, I'd never been in Sea Building, but I went in there with my dog, and quite frankly, as a community, we should be absolutely ashamed of ourselves for putting our kids in there. It's just, I, it's unimaginable for me, when I went in there for the first time, to see exactly how it looked. The outside of this building is, until my son went here, I really never paid much attention to it, to be honest. But the almonds, I mean, they're old, and you've got kids walking from their classroom, they have to come in here for lunch. I think that stage serves as a classroom, to some degree, if I'm not mistaken. You know, that's, I mean, why? Why do we have to have a stage instead of a room for that? I, I listened to the, the last meeting, and there was a lot of stuff said about, you know, the school board and this, and taxes, and, and all that included. I, I really don't care what you raise to. My family's middle income at best. We work hard for everything we have, but the biggest thing that we work hard for is our children. There's a lot of talk about this and that, but I think one thing everybody needs to understand is, it's not about me, and it's not about you, it's about your kids, or your grandkids, and what their future is. I've got a seventeen-year-old daughter who's a junior in high school, she will probably not get to see these changes, but I have a six-year-old and two-year-old twins that can. And as a community, there comes a point in time when there's not enough paint, there's not enough bolts, there's not enough classroom, that you can put on something to cover up what shouldn't have been taken care of probably years ago. If, if, as a community, we can't come together and figure out a way to make this better for our kids, it's just a real sad feeling.
Thank you.
Like some in the room, I have been here since I've known my life for fifty-three years, and I guess ever since I was old enough to ride my bicycle, and I still do from time to time. I've been just a few blocks from Lee Hunter, so I've lived in the shadow of Lee Hunter my entire life. Very proud that I went to school here. I just want to say to the school board, I appreciate the fact that y'all are taking into consideration ultimately leaving Lee Hunter at this location, because I feel like, if it were to move, it's kind of like moving a school out of the community, you know? This is a, this is a part of town, a part of the community that, that needs this facility, and I like the aspect of the smaller schools instead of the next school, so I think I personally believe y'all are on the right track. You know, and on the other side of me, some of y'all know my capacity in the city, I didn't come here to make any grand speeches tonight, but I do believe that it is imperative that we work on these facilities from an economic development perspective. The city has a lot of things going in the right direction today, and we've got a lot of good momentum. And from the gentlemen and, and others who have come in from out of town, you know, and when you take a close look, just, you know, just remember that businesses and homeowners put us under a microscope, and they see everything, and, you know, we want, we want to put our best foot forward. We want to show, it's not just about the fresh coke bank, but it is about proving to people that we invest in education in our community, and it's imperative that we move forward on this. I really do like the plan y'all have put together, from what I've been hearing from a lot of folks, it's, it's very workable and, and very, very, something that can sit and work, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Come out, we need you, Mike. You don't want to hear a slow goat again. I came here in nineteen sixty, which is the only last time. You know where we had our orientation? Right here. I have a picture of it. It was state-of-the-art. It was state-of-the-art. Really wild.
They can't hear me on Facebook. They don't need to hear me on Facebook. This building is state-of-the-art. Now, to tell you how far back that was, Senator Spradling was our, somebody, probably I'm the only one to remember Senator Spradling. But he was our speaker, keynote speaker. And folks, we've been noted for having great schools. This is a great community. I said it before and I'll say it again. The community is only as good as the school. And you can say it any way you want to. And Mayor Burke may not agree with me, but it's the truth. I've been a lot of student. And folks, we need this and need it bad, and I'll say no more. Thank you.
I like the proposal. I hope it passes. I have one question. For it to pass, we're going to have to be a community that stands together and works together. I'm assuming that the board has unanimously approved this plan. Is that true?
No, we haven't. We wanted to, before we voted on it, so to speak, get comment and see what the public thought. So, it was more of a proposal to gain comments. We'll further consider those comments, take them into account as we continue to refine the proposal and then try to work on this through November and December into January. So, but we all agreed on filling the proposal up, yeah.
Do you, but I'm assuming you discussed the plan that you're proposing right here?
We have, yeah.
And everyone approves of that?
Yeah, I think so.
Any other comments?
I retired from here and the electrical is absolutely horrible. I mean, that's all I can say. I was in Room Twenty-Two, which is the far one, and I know we don't use overheads anymore, but if I had used my overhead, either it's Chris Uprody or Gina, we'd have to plant it so we wouldn't plug it in at the same time. So, we'd have to do our lessons alternate. I know you guys are still blowing breakers. When you turn the computers on, they have to give us the key so we can go throw the breaker back when we try to use our computers. You don't even have computers now. So, that whole wing, I mean, that's what it is. Used to, I don't know how we're in this now, but my room, I'll never forget, it was Lady Williams. And he went in the bathroom and said, "Mr. Withers, ice in the toilet." I had every color Colombian coat there was because that's what you had to wear, it was so cold. I bring handwires for my kids. I don't know if that room's better. A little better. But I mean, they need school. You know, outside, when you have to come down here to eat, if it's raining hard, you're going to get wet. Even in the spring, when all the birds are over the awnings and all, I mean, it's not good. I mean, it is safety. You know, we, they watch, they know, they're good, but there's always that chance. There's so many of these outside doors. It's helped, they lock those doors now. So, they have to come straight through, but there's always a chance. Less doors, the better. But I say they need new technology. I mean, we can't even, or I say we, they can't even have the up-to-date stuff because it won't work with them. Technology can't work here. And you have to have a school with technology. You have to grow over the times. So, anything else?
This year, we don't have a computer lab. So, it's been really difficult trying to figure out what we can do for the kids. I just went to a technology little workshop up in Cape. And when I came back, excuse my cold, there were so many things I wanted to try. The, like Lynn said, in her old room, and I have one student computer and I have one iPad. So, a lot of the stuff that I really wanted to try was going to be difficult because we didn't have the computer lab and I can't have any student computers on because it blows the breaker. So, I mean, it is a hindrance when, you know, you have these great ideas and it's difficult. And electricity probably plays a role in that, so.
I've been with the district for nine years. In my classroom, I have a smartboard. And the technology department and the maintenance department are wonderful. They do everything they can for my classroom and my students. Every day, my smartboard blips. So, I'm in the middle of a lesson and my whole technology shuts down. I have nothing for them. And they get so frustrated and, you know, we're pushed to use technology. I got my master's degree in technology. I want to introduce them to technology. Our math testing is on technology. And I have no computers to do that on. I've had to rewater my computers. I've had to replug them into different plugins to try to see if that's the problem. And I'm still having issues. Just recently, we started smelling hot, something hot in my classroom. I had another teacher come in just to make sure I wasn't making things up in my head. She come in and she said, "Oh, I smell that in my room from time to time." We can't pinpoint. Lee Hunter is at a pivotal point that if we do not do something for our students here, it could lead to disaster. We need it in school. I don't know how else to put that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
One of the questions that we had come up at the last meeting that we discussed was maintenance, that what we spend in maintenance as far as the school district on buildings, some of the commentary is we need to maintain the buildings better. So, doing just a little bit of quick math, we spend about five hundred thousand dollars a year on what I would characterize as major maintenance items. Roofs, other major construction-type items. To give you a little bit of context for that, if you take salaries and benefits out of our total school budget, our total budget, without that, it's about fourteen million dollars a year. So, that represents about three point six percent of the remaining budget. So, it is a very large budget item for this school district. And it would be among, after salaries again, among the three of the biggest items, that being maintenance, utilities, insurance. So, I think that number's kind of come up, so I think that's interesting information.
Any other comments from anyone? It was mentioned a few times, some individuals not being from here. Ms. Gladwell had mentioned that she's not from here. I'm not from here either. Neither is any one of the board member, excuse me, board office workers. We're not from Sykes either, but we are from here now because we have most graciously been accepted within this community, been accepted within the school system, and most certainly, we bleed the red and the black because we are bulldogs, most certainly, guys. This is a great school. It's a great opportunity professionally. I don't know how many times I have heard people that have left our school and say, "No other place do we receive the type of professional development and the training needed to do the job like you get in Sykes." So, I'm very proud of those individuals. I'm very proud of my teachers, the administrators. You all do a great job. Hands down, you are the best. Hands down, I tell you. applaud you guys. With that being said, does anyone else? Mr. Gleason? Any other board members have a comment? Well, the proposal that we're looking at, Phase One, we're looking at possibly in April, April of this year, of seventeen months. So, that would be a no-tax increase proposal. It would generate eight million dollars, the twenty-one cents that we currently have on our books, in addition to the three to four million that we have in our reserves, which could be applied as well to that particular facility. In addition to that, Mr. Gleason had mentioned too about the safe room. We're in the process right now of completing that application. And we have to have that application in by December one. Once we get that in, we won't know anything about the money received for a safe room until the end of January.
This last week, I've had a couple of community members ask me or talk to me about the C-Building, whether we renovate it or whether we build a new one. Any comments, questions, concerns about that? And I don't know that we know a hard dollar number. I mean, I think we, in here, we put four hundred thousand renovated. That's a, well, banking, we call it swag. I'll let you figure out what swag is.
That four hundred thousand dollars basically came from about five, six, maybe ten years ago. Because I know I was at the high school at the time. In order to renovate that facility, so we just applied that number there now. Any comments on C-Building? Do I have any, I know Jody had mentioned something about C-Building. Any comments on that? I have a couple, one former and one current C-Building teacher over there. Larry?
I work in C-Building. I teach in the, well, last year, I taught in the cold room. Miss Hoppe's old room. Now, Miss Quan's room. So, I moved up one. Literally, in C-fourteen, whenever you get there in the mornings, there is ice on the walls. It's miserable. Trying to explain to students why we have to wear gloves is not fun. I saw the four hundred thousand dollars on there and as someone who watches HGTV, I see people renovate their houses that spend more than that. So, I was very concerned with that number mostly because, I mean, aside from the library looking pretty, I don't know of anything really great about C-Building other than the other people I work with and the students that come through there. The computer lab, trying to do anything in the computer lab, it just doesn't work. As hard as our tech department works, there's always three or four computers down. And it feels like a boiler room in there. The air conditioning unit fails. So, trying to do the testing for us, come April, whenever that air conditioning unit is going to be running pretty much nonstop, you're either going to have the horrible hum coming from it or you just pray it doesn't break down and your students just give up because they can't concentrate anymore. So, as far as C-Building's concerned, I truly hope that we see the building major renovations. If not, a new building would be great. But I understand the budget issues. I understand money issues. But as someone who works in C-Building every day and spends a lot of time there, I truly want to see that building renovated because I know our students deserve it. So, I want to see it done.
I think that someone who knows more about a denied image to look at that situation, if you're talking about a half a million dollars, don't throw good money away. Apply to the new building.
I've had the pleasure of working in C-Building for about seventeen years. I did get the opportunity to move up to the library, which is very fantastic compared to where I was. Aside from the education, teaching in C-Building and hearing everything that's going on around, the safety is a huge, huge concern for me. As you've heard, the walls don't go to the floor. And I'm not talking just a small space. I've actually been able to crawl under the walls if I get locked out of my classroom. And that's a huge concern to me as someone who teaches in that building that an adult can climb under the walls in C-Building. So, we're not talking just a couple of inches. The library is a very nice facility. It really is. But it has its own issues as well. So, pretty carpet and paint and nice furniture is one thing, but it also has its issues that need to be addressed.
Anyone else? It was asked about how much it would take, the cost amount, to renovate C-Building, but we do not, we do not have a cost estimate as of yet. We're still working with our architect as far as that goes. We do know that in order to construct a brand-new facility, it would be right at four, four and a half million, almost five million dollars, similar to that amount of science ability to construct a new facility there. Do we have any other comments? Yes, sir.
I just want to say, is that, is C-Building still a ready-to-be inside space?
Yes, it's, it was C-Building and then the other elementaries, which we filled out at NOI two years ago. And yes, it's still there. We will probably have to, we don't hear anything, by spring, probably complete that again to reup ourselves.
So, there is that possibility.
Yeah, yes, sir, there's a possibility to have C-Building as a safe space as well.
I have a minor health concern relating to C-Building as well. As a biologist, when I walk in in the winter and the temperature is at like eighty-nine degrees and the humidity is so bad that my glasses fog up and won't clear off for about five minutes, I'm just imagining what's growing in C-Building.
One of the whole thing about C-Building, in the business that I'm in, is the insect field. If you have a wall that a person can hide underneath to unlock their door, I guess I would see that part of it. But that, and that's amazing to me that we can literally crawl underneath the door. But if you can crawl underneath the door, there's no telling what else can crawl underneath the door. So, you're looking at something outside of just, you know, it being cold. I mean, there's a ton of things out there that you don't want in your classroom. That, I just can't even wrap my little brain around the fact that you can crawl underneath the wall to get in the school. I mean, I could just, yeah.
Any other comments? Okay.
I taught precisely for, well, fourteen years now. Started Morehouse and it made here when Morehouse closed. And let me tell you, my first year here, I was sicker than I've ever been. They tell you your first year of teaching is like the sickest because you catch everybody's peaches. No, my first year here was my sickest because I guess my room was an Adalon and so it's just not as, oh, no, I get all the leaks. And I get all the mold. And like, I was working on my room during the summer and I'm not tall enough to know what it was, but my husband came in. He was like, "You've got mushrooms growing in your window." Like, literally, it was a mold, whatever it was. And I was like, definitely, maintenance has come over and they sprayed. They tore out parts of my wall. They put new parts in. I'm still sick. Like, I'm sick again today. Like, it's just constant. I feel like that you can't cover up and fix those things. That's something that, I mean, once mold gets to the places, it's done. You know, and I worry about, I have a new smartboard, which I love, my kids love, but with the leaks, that's going to hit my buyers. That's going to hit my new stuff. And like, that's going to be stuff I can't use anymore. So, I guess it just makes me nervous that if you look, there's a lot of leaks. If you look at our ceiling, it's all, they've done all they can do to them. I feel like, I think these kids deserve more. Like, the teachers deserve a better place to teach in. And I'm so willing, I'm a teacher, you know, my salary, I'm willing to do what it takes to pay for these kids to have what they need. Like, they're my kids. You know, I'm going to give them rest and they're mine. And I want them to have a safe building that's healthy for them. I've had kids removed from my rooms, they were getting sick in there. It's serious. So, they're worth it to me. And not having doctor bills every fall is worth it to me too because I do all of that during this time of year, so.
Anyone else?
I had a question text in on what timing would be, assuming, assuming that we move forward and whatnot if we were to ask the voters in April. It's probably a four- to five-month of design phase and then probably a year of construction phase. So, I was just guessing from the last time we were considering elementary school buildings.
Right. And Larry, you had mentioned too about the board. And Larry, you had mentioned too about the board being on with this, this particular plan. It, it was developed, it was discussed here a couple months ago, and there was a lot of feedback, and there's been a lot of interaction as far as the board administration goes in developing this straw man proposal. And so with this, and with the feedback we're receiving, we hopefully can move forward here with the next month or two, and, and come to consensus as far as what we want to do here in, in January. So, any other comments? Mr. Gleason?
Well, I'll tell you, we really appreciate all the feedback. We've had fantastic attendance at the two meetings that we've had. We've had tons of comments come in through the survey that we've conducted. I know we've all heard comments as well. That's all valuable input. I think that we're trying very hard to accumulate as much information from the public as we can, and use that to really refine how we want to move forward with this. But, so, but we appreciate everybody's time in, in coming out and expressing their thoughts, and, and giving us information that we can further consider. So with that, unless anybody has any other comments. So we will continue, as Tom said, to continue to leave the survey open for the next couple of weeks. We'll talk, we've got a school board meeting next week, which will discuss how we might continue to gain other public input, start to talk about how we take the input that we have gotten, to refine this, and start to make this look like a more formal proposal, and then continue to work through that. So that's the process we'll go through, and then go into our December meeting, and so on and so forth, so.
Several of the, of the comments too, Bill, related to, we want to see plans, we want to see some, some ideas laid out there. And I think, you know, before we come to the community again, and really get input, we need to have something kind of there, if, if this proposal continues to develop.
We also talked about having another one of these type forums in early December.
The responses you got from the service, give you some insight into what direction you're going?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The response you got from the ser, from the service, give you some...
Absolutely. A lot, a lot of insight, a lot of direction, a lot of what people are thinking, what they will support, or what they will not support. So, yeah, out of a hundred-plus responses, we, we got a lot of, I should say, comments. We got a lot of important feedback.
Yeah, I think my expectation would be, take that information, take the information that comes in for the rest of the work, get this group of folks together, and come up with something. Give us some idea of what we want to do.
Exactly. Great, so again, great feedback, unless there's anything else?
Oh, one comment. In January, our January board meeting, we have to have the language that will go on the ballot. So that's why we're continuing to move forward and work on this process. So in January, we will, and the wording that goes through the ballot is very specific about how many dollars you'll raise, what you're gonna use it for, those types of things. So we will have to have our plan a hundred percent for sure in January.
So it kind of gives you a guideline?
Yes.
Any other comments? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. That motion, is there a second? Second? All in favor? All opposed? And we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.